Good evening, directors, members of the public joining us here tonight. I will now call this October 25th, 2022 Committee of the Whole Meeting to order. For those of you who might be joining us for the first time, Committee of the Whole Meetings are informational meetings only. Meetings where the entire board gathers to hear about and discuss a particular topic. Tonight's topic will focus on quality instructional strategies. Just as with the past few months, we will first have the opportunity to hear from central office staff, then from a collection of principals and school staff, and then end our time for board member discussions and questions. Clerk Ings, will you please call the roll for the record?
Director Hardison.
Here.
Director Alameen.
Here.
Director Ali.
Here.
Director Sarrio.
Here.
Director Ings is here. Director Jordan.
Here.
Director Booker.
Here.
Director Kreeney.
Present.
Student Representative Austin. Student Representative Weston.
Here.
Chair Ellison.
Here, thank you. As mentioned, our sole item for the evening is quality instructional strategies. Interim Superintendent Cox, please go ahead.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. Just really glad to have you here tonight. As we've used this theme of going through the seasons of a school year, tonight we are on our quality instructional strategies. And we've moved from curriculum last month to talking about this. And when I think about this, I really think about this is where the art of teaching kind of comes in. So I'm really excited to see the presentation tonight. Excited and want to thank all of our principals who are here tonight, colleagues that they might have brought with them. Appreciate your time and being here. And I'm going to turn over to Dr. Amy Fearing.
Hi, good evening. Chair Ellison, board members, student rep, interim Superintendent Cox, good evening. I would be remiss to not talk about the photo that you see up there. This is a student. She's actually a family friend who came from a charter school and chose to enroll at Fair High School this year as a ninth grader. And she attended some of the summer programming to get a head start. And she just wanted to let all of you know she loves Fair and that MEA was very difficult because she was out of school for so many days. So she missed her friends and her teachers. So I just always think it's great to put up photos of our actual staff, students, families, parents, teachers, et cetera. As mentioned, interim Superintendent Cox, here's the agenda that we've been following for our Committee of the Whole. And then just quick as a starting off point here, I wanted to re-ground us in what we're aiming to be our goals. Obviously, I'm not going to read through all of these goals up on the screen, but just as a reminder to our directors that as you're listening, be aware of these specific breakdown targets that we're looking for as part of our strategic plan. I do know it's important to begin our conversation tonight by reminding ourselves of what this work is meant to accomplish for our students. So again, the end goal that you can see there and of course in your packet. Executive Director Hunter is unable to be with us tonight, so I just wanted to put up those three areas that she brings to the Committee of the Whole in representation of her department, the professional learning communities, our instructional leadership teams, and our school improvement plans as part of working and weaving through our quality instructional strategies. We're going to be hearing from some members of our academic team, specifically our literacy and math, so they'll introduce themselves as they get ready to speak. So it is really a presentation by our academic team, not just myself or Deputy Rellinger, as it would be some nights. Just a really quick review of our MTSS, again, grounding, again, our quality instructional strategies are multifaceted. Really, you're looking at multiple ways that instruction is supported through assessment cycle, our team processes, which I just mentioned, through our PLCs, our ILTs, and then, of course, the infrastructure to support the implementation. This has been presented before, but again, as we think about what is quality instruction, regardless of the content, content agnostic, these things should be present in all. Having educators understand what is the science behind how students learn, the core content knowledge, what do I need to know to be able to teach my core content? Do I understand what students need to know before they got into my class? And do I know where they're going after they leave my class? And then cultural responsive and sustaining practices, this is what we touched on last Committee of the Whole. And then I did link up here in our SOEI, our Standards of Effective Instruction, the domain, domain three, that looks at through classroom observation, these different areas. And then I'm going to turn it over to Lindsay. I do want to say that we have one member of our literacy team, Jody, who is unable to be with us tonight. She is over our K-8 literacy, but the rest of the literacy team is here and introduce themselves as they go through the presentation.
Thank you, Dr. Fearing. Good evening, school board members. My name is Dr. Lindsay Robinson. I'm one of the K-5 content leads. And what I'm sharing with you today is a look at some quality instructional, quality instruction, sorry, in literacy. And so what I wanted to make sure that we mentioned on this first slide is that reading is a complex process. There's a large body of research that has found that there are five effective approaches in how we teach children to read: phonemic awareness instruction, phonics instruction, fluency, vocabulary, and comprehension. And there is also research that shows that factors such as motivation, engagement, and oral language development are essential to literacy as well. I wanted to mention that in multilingual reading instruction, phonemic awareness and phonics instruction are essential there, but they shouldn't be taught devoid of context. Often, we focus really hard on that. And the context of oral language, vocabulary, background knowledge, et cetera, are also essential for our multilingual learners. Didn't know how to use that. So I'm focusing in on something called functional phonics. And what you see here is a PLC that is really focused on using data to guide our instruction. And so I'll tell you a little bit about functional phonics. It addresses two areas of quality literacy instruction. It explicitly teaches phonemic awareness and phonics, and I can talk about what those are as well. Phonemic awareness is the most advanced skill under the bigger term phonological awareness, and it is actually completely oral. In other words, letters and letter sounds are actually not a part of phonemic awareness at all. It's all just hearing the sounds. Phonological awareness, the umbrella term, it includes word awareness, syllable awareness, onset and rhyme, and identifying and producing words that rhyme. And phonemic awareness is the ability to manipulate individual phonemes or sounds in a word. And functional phonics teaches phonemic awareness skills such as blending, segmenting, deleting, and substituting phonemes. Then phonics is connecting the learning in phonemic awareness to actual letters. So in other words, the sounds that they're hearing in phonemic awareness adding it to letters is what phonics is. And so here you can see that they've identified a specific phonics pattern, digraphs, and you can see there's a picture that's used in the curriculum for ing. And it uses data to determine instruction. And then on this last slide, you can see the second part of the PLC. It focuses on the specific instructional techniques used to teach digraphs, such as blending and using letter tiles. And these strategies were chosen in response to the data that was collected at the beginning of the cycle. And then at the end of the cycle, data will be collected and used to determine next steps. Now I'm going to hand it over to Megan.
My name is Megan Paulister-Ronhill, and I am the other K-5 literacy content lead, working mainly under Laura Cavender's portfolio and then with the dual-language schools. So I'm going to talk also about reading, but I'm going to discuss a little bit more about the language comprehension piece. I put up here the simple view of reading that is the shift we are moving towards as a district, science of reading, the simple view of reading. And Lindsay talked a lot about the word recognition piece, as you can see up here, the phonics, phonemic awareness, which is crucial to learning to read, but there's also, that's just a small piece. The language comprehension is also a very large piece of being a fluent reader. So for that language comprehension piece, the district uses the curriculum Benchmark. So I'm going to talk a little bit about Benchmark and how we use that to teach content and comprehension and what that looks like in our, like Lindsay showed, in our PLCs. And then also a look-forers document that we have created as a literacy department. Oh, and here I am, clicking on my computer. So we've been working really hard as a literacy team this year to create not only those PLC forms that Lindsay just showed you an example of, but also a look-forers document that can be used as a resource, not only for educators, but also for administrators and other stakeholders in the school building. This is just a small piece of it. It's actually a lot longer and larger than this, but it really provides a resource for teachers and administrators to see what is in a literacy block, what is actually in those 145 minutes we have dedicated to reading, and that phonics is just a piece of that. Benchmark is one of the resources teachers could be using for the other part of that literacy block. So I have some resources that students and teachers are using, pictures of some of the books and some of the visuals that help our multilingual learners. The document also kind of can be used as a resource for administrators to know what they're seeing when they walk into a classroom, what are they looking for, and then help them understand what they're actually seeing. So besides that, this is the PLC log for Benchmark for that comprehension and content curriculum that we're working with. We know that research shows us that well-developed PLCs have a high impact, not only in teaching practice, but also on student achievement. So we are leveraging our PLC time a lot this year and making sure that teachers have time to collaborate together, to find resources, and to better support our students. And this is just one of the documents we're providing as a team to try to help guide that collaboration. So it kind of helps unite teachers as thought partners on the, looking at the data of where our students are and then what we can do to keep progressing them on their literacy journey. All right. And since I do support the dual-language schools, I thought it was only fair to discuss some of our bilingual literacy instruction in Spanish. I'm also bilingual. So I'm going to do this piece of the presentation, it's only three slides, in Spanish. I acknowledge, I know that there are people here that probably don't speak Spanish. This was very purposeful in that kind of helping us acknowledge that we have a lot of multilingual learners, a lot of multilingual family members that have to support their students on a daily basis in a second language. And that understand, not understanding is uncomfortable, right? It's uncomfortable. So if you do feel a little uncomfortable, I apologize, but just lean into that and acknowledge that that's what a lot of our family members and students are feeling on a daily basis. Entonces, aquí estoy, voy a empezar en español. Bueno, entonces estoy hablando acerca de cómo es leer en dos idiomas. Estamos leyendo, aprendiendo a leer en inglés, pero también en las escuelas dual estamos aprendiendo a leer en español. Así que tienen unos, unas cosas extras que tienen que hacer los maestros. Por eso en las escuelas dual tenemos los directores, los maestros, pero también coordinadores bilingües que ayudan a hacer este, este puente, pues, esta conexión entre el inglés y el español. Entonces igual tenemos la versión sencilla de la lectura. Tenemos la comprensión, entender qué está pasando en mi libro. También tenemos la fonética, reconocimiento de palabras, pero cuando estamos aprendiendo en dos idiomas tenemos la parte oratoria y también la transferencia entre los dos idiomas. Esas son partes que hay que incorporar en las lecciones. Por eso tenemos nuestros fabulosos coordinadores que nos ayudan en las escuelas a hacer mapas curriculares que no solamente toman en cuenta benchmark, que es el contenido, esos estándares del estado de Minnesota, sino también toman en cuenta la parte de la justicia social, su cultura, y también el objetivo del lenguaje, que también es muy importante cuando estamos hablando de dos idiomas. Y cómo se ve al mapa curricular en el salón? Pues se ve como tres objetivos. Tienen su contenido, que es benchmark, ¿verdad? También tiene un objetivo del lenguaje, que es la conexión entre inglés y español. Y también tienen un objetivo que es cultural, para que los niños y los estudiantes pueden verse en lo que están leyendo, la cultura. And I want to give a shout-out too to these slides were created, the dual-language slides were created with the multilingual department and by the dual-language coordinators. So we all worked together on this, so I wanted to acknowledge their efforts here as well. But, thank you. Any questions after, you can let me know.
Thank you so much, school board, interim superintendent Cox, Director Ellison, for having us here today, this afternoon. I am Heather Like, and I work, I'm one of the six 12 literacy specialists, and I'm going to speak first, actually, to some of the work that Jody Langen is doing as, mainly working with our middle school. And like, you know, was said earlier, she's unable to be here today. So one thing that we are working with as a tool at the middle school level is using Stary, which is a structural literacy tool that is kind of, it comes to us, and we can use the different components to support growth at the middle school level. And you can see here that right now, most, some schools, most schools have had a chance to explore the first unit, and these are some look-forers that they can use at that middle school level. And as they explore more units, they have more look-forers that they can unpack and use at their sites. But mainly, I'm here to talk about the work that I am doing, which is disciplinary literacy. So we know as we get into that secondary level, especially as we get closer and closer to graduation, we want to make sure that students are able to transfer their skills from one classroom to another, and then from classrooms to the world. And so that's one of the things that we're really working on right now, which is fortifying literacy skills across disciplines. So it's not just learning to read, but it's also learning to speak, learning to, to discuss and listen, and then apply those skills in any situation. So what you have up here on the, on the screen is a graphic that really takes some of the work that we've been doing with the General Education Leadership Network. They put together a binder of things. This takes that and puts it into one graphic that breaks it down into the 10 domains. And so what you'll see up here at the top are the five main domains, the action domains. These are things we see students do, right? We see students reading, writing, thinking, speaking and listening, and then discussing. And the big difference between speaking and listening and discussing, just to highlight, because a lot of times people think those are the same, is discussion is where a student is able to take another student's idea and bridge off of it. And they can add a resource, they could add a yeah-but, they can add a yes-and, but they're, they're spinning off of it, and it's not pivoting back to the teacher at any point, right? So it's a discussion component rather than just talking or just taking it in. So it's more active. So we know that with those action domains, that if, if our students are doing them multiply multiple times, so they're doing all five together in the course of a lesson, that they are more likely to fortify and grow their literacy skills, but also literally their hippocampus will start to grow if they're interweaving all five of these domains together during the course of a class period. And our hope with disciplinary literacy, and we're in the very early stages at this point, is that we can work with our social studies teachers, our math, our science, our art, our world language, to be trying to increase the amount of reading, writing, speaking, listening, discussion, and thinking that's happening in their classrooms, so that students are getting that multiple times a day, and then the next day, multiple times a day, because they're getting it through every class. And so we want to see those repeated as much as possible throughout every lesson. Whereas then, when you look at the bottom domains, the knowledge domains, which is in the wheel there, those are actually broken into, these are the, the things that we want students to be focusing on. So focusing on their own growth, their own learning, focusing on how things connect, they're interconnected to other disciplines or to their life or the world, they're focusing on their own inquiry, what questions do they have that are driving their desire to learn more, they're focusing on a diversity of resources and perspectives and applications, and they're focusing on the content area, vocabulary and concepts that might have a different definition in a different context, right? And so they're exploring those approaches and those ideas. And we want to see those components, that wheel, rotating through the course of each unit. So students might through multiple times in a quarter, might have an opportunity to rotate through that wheel over the course of the, over the course of the course. So that is one of the things that we're working on right now. Predominantly, this graphic and this guide has been shared with our principals at our principal professional development, and we'll be doing some more work with this actually on Thursday of this week. And then we are also using this with our schools that are being supported by the CLSD grant work, and we actually just did some work with that today. And we're excited to, to work on some look-forers that will be inspired by each of these domain areas, but we're still in the very early stages of that. And then I also want to talk a little bit about some of the work that we're doing supporting our professional learning communities. So at the secondary level, Ms. Langen, who's not here today, and myself, we worked with our principals at the previous principal PD session on some different ways that we can support our students and our teachers in regards to their thoughts about their literacy goals within their SIOP components. And so what we were looking at with that is, this is an example of how the disciplinary literacy skills can be seen in science. And this is actually an example that is directly related to one of the goals in one of our high schools. And then this was a sub-goal that one of their science teams created as a PLC group. And then we looked at what can that look like as far as when you're doing a plan-do-study-act cycle in, as a PLC, what might that look like? And especially as you're trying to support some of those literacy components. And you can see as you go through this, that in the do cycle, they're looking at a role, I had to write it down because I didn't want to forget, role, audience, format, topic structure. And with that component, you're really looking at connections to outside of the area. The, the action domains are all in that format piece, the topic is content and inquiry. So it's connecting many of those components of that disciplinary literacy in that one strategy. And then they're analyzing their data to look at how do they want to move forward? And then once they move forward, one of their components for actions is actually to look at students and how students would tweak the approach moving forward, which pulls us back into the self and peer reflection domain of that knowledge piece on the, on the bottom. So this is just an example of how a PLC can support the disciplinary literacy work. So, thank you. I'm going to pass it off to math.
Okay, thank you, Heather, and thank you, literacy team. Good evening, members of the board. My name is Miriam Teray, and I support K-5 mathematics. And I will turn, here we go. Okay, so quality instruction in mathematics. Students should be engaged in problem-solving tasks that are challenging, open-ended, and encourages multiple solutions. Representation should support the seeing of, should support seeing mathematics in multiple ways, which can develop their mathematical thinking. Teachers have the flexibility to leverage students' culture, conditions, and language to support and enhance their mathematical learning. With this, students should share their thinking in multiple ways that include verbal, verbal representations as well as written. Thank you. Okay, quality, we're going to talk a little bit about it in the PLC structure. Quality instruction in mathematics depends on solid planning practices, which can be accomplished through the PLC structures. In response to the fours, four questions, what is it we want our students to know and to be able to do? How will we know if each student has learned it? How will, how will we respond when students do not learn it? And how will we extend the learning for students who have demonstrated proficiency? Understanding the big ideas or the content, the strategies students use to demonstrate their thinking, as well as the models students use to represent their thinking, directly correlates to what we want our students to know and to be able to do. In the appendix, slides 43 through 46 are some example, is a sample of unit planning and an, and an example of how strategies and models are utilized to develop those skills and concepts.
Good evening. My name is Jennifer Hansak, and I also support K-5 mathematics in Minneapolis. So in the previous slide, we, we were looking at how will I know if students, wait, how will we know if students have learned it? So we have the use of screeners, pre-assessments, and post-assessments that provide teachers with an understanding of what their students know. This understanding helps teachers with planning to meet the needs of their classrooms. This includes re-engaging students into the core. And there are examples that teachers can use, and it also means that we can provide an extension to the core as well. And there's also examples of how teachers can plan purposefully engaging students into the core and extending the core for those students who need that, based upon the screeners and the assessments.
With our new curriculum bridges slash number corner, there are two components that comprise the math block. Number corner is a 20-minute number sense routine that provides ongoing numeracy skill development and practice. Number corner introduces, reinforces, and extends skills and concepts that are related to the critical areas of study at each grade level. This practice should occur every day.
Finally, yep. Pro, oops, there we go. Problems and investigations is where the majority of the grade level standards are introduced, developed, and mastered. It is the core lesson. This is the opportunity for students to be engaged in open-ended questions, using problem-solving tools, explaining and justifying their mathematical thinking. Teachers utilize the models and strategies developed during the unit of study. Workplaces are games and other activities that support differentiation and practice in the classroom. These opportunities follow problems and investigations. And this is a list of some of the things you would see in the classroom during problems and investigations. Yep. It's your turn. Okay. Boom. Yeah. Oh, that's, that's me. That's you. Back down. Go.
Sorry, just have one more slide before I turn it over to Executive Director Francis. But again, this is just to reiterate, how do we ensure quality instruction is happening? So these are the different things that we have. We have the actual assessments, a screener diagnostic, students' performance should show us that we have quality instruction happening. We also have learning walks, our SOEI tool that I briefly pointed out earlier. And then, of course, our PLCs also monitor on a weekly basis the instruction that's happening in the classroom. Now I will pass the mic back down to Mr. Francis.
My name is Derek Francis. I'm the executive director of Equity and School Climate for Minneapolis Public Schools. And I'm looking forward to sharing with you all just making that connection to our goals. And I'm going to speak around student climate, how students are feeling at school, how they're showing up, and feeling affirmed at schools. And so if you're looking at the screen here, we're talking about student well-being, 2026, 2027. And so think about the current students we work with and how we can make incremental gains each year so that we can reach these goals. And the number here that you see throughout is 60%, but we want at least that. We're not saying we're going to get to that and stop. We want to make sure more than 60% of our students are feeling that way. And so think about it then, and make it personal too. Think about someone in your own life. For me, my daughter, she's four now, so in 2026, 2027, she'll be seven, or she's three, she'll be seven then. So this thing like, wow, I'm not going to say how old I'll be, but just imagining school and how we want the environment to be and look for our students. So if you look on here, it says we want at least 60% of students to indicate that they almost always feel safe in school, indicate that they feel that they belong at school, a sense of belonging. Also, students indicate that teachers care about them. I think that's so important when we're thinking about our quality instructional strategies, being mindful of the feel factor. That's really important, that students feel connected to the staff that are teaching them. That makes a world of difference. So being mindful of some of these components, I want to make sure we centered on percent of students highly rating affirmed identity. So being mindful of our students, we, here in Minneapolis Public Schools, we have students that come in with so many different identities, and there's times in our society where those identities have not been affirmed. And so making sure that when they come to school, they feel proud of their racial identity, their gender identity, their family background. That's what we want our students to feel like when they come to school. That's what we're working towards. So keep that in mind as we're looking at these next couple of slides. So we're talking about quality instructional strategies as we're thinking about equity and school climate, and we're sitting under where it says culturally responsive and engaging. So how we're connecting with our students in that culturally responsive, engaging way. I think if we're going to be mindful of how to be culturally responsive in Minneapolis, we have to be aware of our we have to be aware of our student population being majority students of color. And I say that because that means being mindful of how the students and families from diverse backgrounds have maybe experienced not feeling welcomed in certain spaces. So when we're thinking about our school space and we're doing that planning, we have to be really intentional about the identities of our diverse students and families because that's the majority. And I think being mindful of centering that, and you see that in our languaging for our strategic plan. And so some of the ways that work will be done is helping to help understand our students' identities and affirm their identities in the classroom space. It's come through professional development. I'll talk about some of those highlights, what that looks like. And then there'll be times where unfortunately, students' identities get attacked. And there's conflict when you're in a school space. And so having some restorative practices because it's so important to teach those skills of how to mend when incidents happen. So taking a look, and we're thinking about positive classroom environment. So think about going to school. Think about when we say positive classroom environment, we're thinking about, it's not always, it's starting initially knowing what the things you're seeing, the visual things you see in the school. So when we say representation in the environment, what can you see? We want to make sure schools, when we're thinking about the environment, how are students seeing themselves, their identities represented in the content, in the stories that are being read? Seeing students wearing hijabs, seeing students who speak Spanish, feeling affirmed to speak your native language in class. That's what we want as the norm. When I'm thinking about my daughter, I want her to hear that and know that as a norm when she's in the school. And so thinking and having that heart for this work, and not just having it be a representation of things you see, but also representation in our staff. Making sure students are able to see a mirror. How important is to see someone educating you that looks like you? Sometimes students don't get that opportunity. So be mindful of how we're increasing our work around that. And then I think it's so important to look at the, I'll reference also the classroom environment for SOEI domain, too. Start thinking about the interaction because this is the meat of it. You know, you have quality instruction. You could have like the Mercedes-Benz of content and curriculum. But that person driving it, the skills they bring, the relationships they can have with students that, oh, I see you. I'm learning about you. Oh, yeah, I had your brother. They, you know, they told me about you. I'm glad you're in this class. That welcoming feel is a huge piece of the classroom environment. Students know how they are made to feel in that space. And so at some point, we have some indicators for that. And so when you look at the classroom environment, our expectation for teachers and staff in the classroom is that they have that safe learning environment. And when we say safe learning environment, some people think, oh, physically safe. This is more emotionally safe. Do I feel like I can take a risk and raise my hand? Do I feel like, hey, the identity I have, can I speak up in this higher-level class? I'm the only black kid in here? That's what we're talking about, safety in class, where you feel affirmed with the staff in there says, oh, I see you. I know you're in this higher-level class. You should be here. You deserve to be in here. You're going to make it. That's what we're talking about, the kind of environment we're visioning. Y'all got me going now. Imagine, imagine. And so then also the high expectations. I think it's so important that you have that belief in our students, that they feel it. Students know when they walk in, if there's a belief from the staff in them. So create an environment where we're providing staff opportunities to grow and how they're doing that work with students, building the climate in the room so students feel welcome and supported and affirmed in their identities. I'll highlight briefly around some of the ways that professional development has been used to support quality instruction because you have to be mindful of that educator. If they're supporting students and students from different backgrounds, we're all humans. We have areas that we need to grow in, do an audit of. Myself, me too, Derek Francis, Equity Director, I'm aware of my own lens and bias and things I have to be aware of so that I don't cause harm to students in school spaces or other staff. So we do professional development around that so that we can do that work ongoing. We have our district strategic plan, highlighting goal area two and four. And those strategies are designed to make sure we're aware of how students are feeling and being seen and heard in the school space. We have content that you see there that we use that has a focus on supporting the building of students' identity. And then restorative practices. We have a partnership with the Leaguer Rights Center. And restorative work is so important because everyone wants to say that we're doing diversity, inclusion, we're a diverse district, and we have representation. But we are being honest, there's times where issues come up, where things are said that's hurtful, where racism happens. And so having the ability to say, hey, we're going to learn from these things that happen, and redo the restorative work and model how to do that work so that students are able to learn it at a young age, like, hey, here's how we handle these situations. That's the work we have to be mindful of moving forward. So I'll pause, and thank you so much for your time to share.
Just quickly, Emily Olsen couldn't be here tonight, so I'm just going to cover the next slide, not going to read through it. But I just want to make sure that we highlight, oh, it's animated, what we have here to support our teachers as we go through the work of ensuring quality instruction. So I know that this slide is a little busy, oopsies. But I do want to highlight that, you know, we don't just expect great things. We actually provide the support. And again, if we need to provide more support, we're welcome to that feedback and have an ongoing conversation with our educators about what else they need. So with that, it is time to turn it over to our schools. So give us a minute for transition, and appreciate the time. Board.
Good evening, Chair Ellison, Directors, and Interim Superintendent Cox. On behalf of the entire school leadership team, we thank you for giving us this opportunity. Again, on behalf of Dr. Michael Walker, Youssef Abdullah, Laura Cavender, and Dr. Harris Berry, we really do thank you for this opportunity. Tonight, we have some of the great work that are taking place in schools. And we're really excited about sharing that great work this evening. However, before we get started, I do ask that everyone in attendance tonight join in recognizing all the principals in the district as we celebrate National Principals Month. Thank you so much, principals. Now, we will start with Winona Elementary School, followed by Kiwedon-Lindale. And as you can see, we have some guests with us from Lindale. Then Franklin, Heritage, and then we'll finish off with Marcy.
Thank you, Dr. Thomas. Good evening, school board members. Amy Lumen, Principal at Lake Nakamas Community School, Winona. And I have the privilege today, I'm glad Superintendent, Interim Superintendent Cox used that word "art" because I think what I'm going to share this evening really gets at the art of thinking outside the box and doing something a little bit differently. So at Winona, we have the unique privilege of serving kindergarten and first grade. So we are looking at two developmental ages. And you can do a lot when you're serving the same two grade levels. So what I'm sharing this evening is something we call our Biz Books. And what Biz Books are, it came about last year when we had a disruption in spring, and we had to bring all of our students back together and explain what happened. And so we did it through a social story. And after reading the social story and seeing the powerful language that was used, I got the idea of how can we use and do something a little bit different as we start off the first six weeks of school? And we talk about routines and expectations. And it can get a little dry, it can get a little boring. And we have our youngest learners, and we don't want school to be dry and boring and feel like it's just, do this, we don't do this. We're way, okay, we're not on that slide yet, but Allison, that's okay. I guess we don't control the clicker. So the big why, we invented these books. They are called Biz Books. And our main character is Biz because he is our school mascot. And then we added a few more characters called Mrs. Nutmuffin, and she is the teacher. And then we have Nibbles, who is Biz's partner. And so the why came, we wanted a common language around the building for expected behavior. We also wanted a shared learning experience across students and families. Even though we only serve two grade levels, we do have some families that have both a kindergarten and first grader. So that way, when students come home, sitting around the table, in the car, doing whatever, they have a common experience to talk about and get excited about for school. Students love the idea, even at first grade, when I was monitoring last year for e-learning, the number of first graders that read graphic novels. And so we tried to create it like in a graphic novel idea. That's still a work in progress. It really, right now, just looks like a cartoon. So that's a work in progress. We wanted to make a way, talking about expectations, more engaging and fun versus sit and get. If you think back to your first six weeks of school at any school year, you're sitting there and you go home, and you're like, what'd you talk about? All routines, how to walk in the hall. We wanted to make that more engaging. And part of that came from last fall. We did Hopes and Dreams with our families at conferences. And their bigs, hope and dreams, again, this is kindergarten and first grade, although I would bet it's similar for all kids up through high school. They wanted their kids to love school. They wanted them to be a good citizen, and they wanted them to have friends. And so that is kind of our story through our Biz Books. Hopefully, you have two of them in your packet. So moving on to implementation, we surveyed the staff around what did you want for the first six weeks? What did you want the topics to be? The stories currently are written by our school social worker, Jennifer Frisby, and my speech and language pathologist, Jessica Hamilton. And they're illustrated by my art teacher, Samantha Powell. They're taught weekly by the classroom teachers. Then they're sent home in the Wednesday folder, so there is that home-to-school connection. Parents can reinforce it, know what their students are talking about. And then we can reference it throughout the week or even throughout the month. So if all of a sudden, maybe a classroom is really struggling with walking down the halls or making friends out at the recess, they can go back and go, well, what did Biz and Nibbles say? How do we make a friend out on the playground? So on the next slide, you'll see the first six weeks. Week one was hallway expectations or expected behavior. Week two was how to be a good friend. And then we had lunchroom expectations, bathroom basics. That was a very interesting story. I did not include that, but it's a very interesting story. We did arrival and dismissal, and then we did bus safety. And I think anytime you do, there's your like, is this making an impact? Is the home connection happening? And a few weeks ago, a parent came in, and it was after the lunchroom expectation. And she goes, I finally get it. And I said, well, what? She goes, my daughter's constantly trying to get us to do the listening L at the dinner table, and she keeps going like this when she wants a napkin, and this when she wants a fork. She goes, I had no idea what she was talking about until the Biz story came home and explained the listening L. And then the family can have the conversation and reinforce it. So those are the first six weeks. Our next steps is to get feedback from the students, the staff, and the family. Are they making the impact that we hope they do? We are going to do a staff survey for our next six topics. The eventual pie-in-the-sky goal is that eventually, each classroom will write a Biz story to contribute to our books. And so we haven't gotten to that part yet, but we are only, I think, at day 29 and 30 with our kindergarten students. So thank you, and I hope if they are in your packet, you enjoy reading them.
Good evening. My name is Kristi Ward. I am the principal at Kiwedon. It is the joining school. We're the 2-5 part of Winona-Kiwedon. I'm here tonight to talk about, to bring life what Miriam had talked about, what the Bridges math program. And so you get to see a little bit of this in action. So just to give you kind of a breakdown for the K5 daily structure is we have problems and investigations, and you can go, thank you, yes. Problems, investigations, workplaces, and then number corner. And today, I'm going to focus, or tonight, I'm going to focus on the number corner because it is part of every single classroom, second through fifth grade. All right, so what you're going to see here are some still pictures of kind of what that number corner looks like in a second-grade classroom. And if you, when you take a look, you're going to want to see kind of the similarities between the second and the fifth-grade classroom that we're going to talk about. But there's going to be a video showing you the second-grade classroom and where we have students that are leading that number corner activity. Do you want to hit the video?
Vertical number line count of attempts. Winnie, you got it? Thank you. All right, now the challenge is, see if you can really follow her. I know you can count faster than she's pointing. Let's see if we can do it in unison, means together. You ready? Okay, go. Zero.
Ten, twenty, thirty, forty, fifty, sixty, seventy, eighty, ninety, one hundred.
And so you can see just a glimpse in what that looks like. And every day, the number corner happens in our second-grade, third, fourth, and fifth-grade rooms, as well as our kindergarten and first-grade rooms. When we go to the next slide, you're going to see the fifth grade. Look at the similarities between the calendar that you see up there, as well as the investigation chart that the teachers keep track of for equations. This one is going to be a little bit more in-depth. You're going to be able to see the students doing think, pair, share, where they're talking elbow corners to each other. They're sharing their learning with one another to solve the equation. They flipped the card. So you don't get to see that part, but you're going to, you'll kind of see. Let's go ahead and play that.
It's our last official.
And this is fifth grade.
Calendar. We are going to flip over the other one so you can see what's next. So I want you to turn and talk to each other about what the equation could be for this. Agro.
Amen.
No jabber.
Mojini. What did you and your partner talk about?
So the dry land has some, so that would be sixty.
Total, right? So what plus what? So thirty hundreds. Zero point three zero plus zero point three zero equals, Mojini? Sixty seconds. Anybody else come up?
So those are two really brief presentations of what kind of happens there. But for your kind of reference, some of the things that the number corner features are short daily workouts that introduce, reinforce, and extend skills and concepts related to those critical areas of study at each grade. There are new pieces added to the display each day, providing starting points for discussion, problem-solving, and short written exercises. So some of the activities that take place are the calendar grid, the calendar collector, computational fluency, number line, days in school, daily rectangle, problem-solving strings, and solving problems. So all of those go into there. What we really encourage teachers to do is to break that up so that the number corner really happens sometimes after they come in from a transition, whether it's recess, or after breakfast, or maybe it's after lunch. And so it's a quick 20-minute connection to math. And when I was talking to the staff again this morning about it, they said, it's And when I was talking to the staff again this morning about it, they said, it's so great because it's not even like the kids recognize this as kind of a learning and connecting to concepts that they do when they get into their math block. And so it's been really impactful, really fun to see the engagement of students. And I would encourage you any time to stop on by if you want to see the Bridges at Key Weyden. So thank you.
Hi, good evening. My name is Megan O'Connor, and I'm the principal of Lyndale Community School. I'm just going to quickly introduce my friends here. And if everyone could give them a smile, I think they'll take a deep breath. So going back to what Derek was saying, they need to feel welcome, right? So this is Ibrahim. He's a second grader at Lyndale. Maeda, a first grader. Farhia Dell, our Somali heritage teacher, and Hannah Haley Asusar, assistant principal. So this evening, I am going to talk to you about our Somali heritage program. All right. So what is the Somali heritage program? The Somali heritage program at Lyndale, and there's also at a couple other schools in Minneapolis, aims to really bridge that gap between school and home for our students. So currently, we serve 53 students who are part of our program. Farhia will go more into this in a second. But last year, she started with our kindergarten first graders, and she does small group instruction with them to teach them Somali language and culture. And this year, we added on the second graders as well. So I'm going to pass it to Farhia because we really want to hear from them.
So just to give you a little snapshot of daily lesson, we come in, we read each other in Somali, we have a little conversation, and then we practice the previous learning. That can include counting, colors, alphabet. We practice writing sentence, like, kind of what jale means, this is a yellow, simple sentence. We do a lot of conversations. And then, this is Maeda's going to read Somali words for us. She got a little bit nervous, and I'll be nervous too because I am nervous. So she's just, she's only six. She, you got this. Here you go, Maeda.
Agar, adan, bluk, buni, basali, kudru. Madaw, jale, orange.
Maeda, let me see what we're doing. Hiya. We're going to ask her three questions. Let's see what Somali words are.
P and Z.
P, maal, ubadla.
Ba.
And Z, maal, ubadla.
Sa.
Almost in time. Do you want to introduce a brain? Okay.
Hi, my name is Ibrahim. I'm from second grade. Today, I want all of you guys to learn numbers from one to 10 to 10 to 100. These are Somali words. If you don't know, it's fine. We always like to teach kids and other people from schools. It's not like, like, for example, there's lots of Christians, right? And we say, we all want to be together in a loving family. It does not matter if you're Christian or not. We just want you to learn and have fun. Now, I'm going to read you some numbers. Kau, labo, sadha, afar, shan, liht, tada, bo, segal, sega, toban, labatan, sodan, afatan, kautan, lehtan, todobatan, seditan, sagashan, bukan, and kun. These numbers are, so I'll tell you, kun, kau is one, labo is two, sadha is three, afar is four, shan is five, liht is six, tada, bo, seven, segal is eight, segal, now, sedid is eight, segal is nine, toban is 10, labatan is 20, sodan is 30, and afatan is 40. And 50 is kautan, and 60 is lehtan, and 70, this is a long one, todobatan. And then 80 is seditan, and then 90 is sagashan, shan. And then 100 is bukan. That's 100 in Somali. If you didn't know, then 1,000 is kun.
You memorized that, and I didn't, so I go, um. Yeah. Maga.
Maga, ekwa, Ibrahim.
Im, sana, cherta.
Wa, saja, sedan.
And the wa, jashay.
Ant, wa, dha, shi, wa, baris, baris, an, an. Was, kajabati, baris, i, sugba.
All right. And then, just to wrap up, all of this instructional strategy and efforts wouldn't be made without collaboration. So Farhia meets weekly with the multilingual DPF and then also collaborates with the grade level teachers to make sure that what she's teaching when she pulls the students out for Somali language class is also happening inside the classroom too. So there's a lot of collaboration to make all this happen. So thank you. Oh, yes, you can say one. Hannah, do you want to? No.
I think I saw that, I'm sorry. I think I just want to add to that, this program won't be possible without support because when you launch a new program, it needs a community, a village. And the village I have, because I'm very lucky, and my community is Lyndale, is that I have support of 100% from my colleagues, my admin, and the whole community. I think everyone, even the non-Somali, are so proud that we have actually programmed that brings our kids their home and language and all in one. And I think that is, I just want to thank my colleagues, my principals that really support. It is really hard to pull kids when you have ELL, special ed, speech, and for them to take that burden, to pull a kid so they can have their culture and language. That is just, is amazing, and we don't give enough thanks to my colleagues and principals and all of you. Thank you.
Is this, oh, it is on. Okay. Hi, I'm Heather Frye. I'm the interim principal at Franklin Middle School. I'm also here with friends. I don't know how I'm going to be able to follow that or how we are going to be able to follow that, but we will, we will try. When I was asked to come and present today, I thought instructional practices, we are a esteemed middle school, and so what better way to present than to ask our arts teacher and our technology teacher to speak on some of the instructional practices that they have that are maybe beyond the scope of reading, math, but incorporating all of those things. So I'm just going to turn it over to our instructional leaders here, starting with, and also I have our assistant principal here, Jamitra Rumo. We have Melody Strong and Jeremiah Shadegh, but I will turn it over to Ms. Strong. No, Mr., I'm sorry, Mr. Shadegh. That will be the first slide. First slide is Mr. Shadegh.
Excellent. Let's see what we have up here. That looks great. So last four weeks at Franklin, we've been working in, well, actually, every one of my classes beyond advisory on water bottle rockets. Part of this was because I had some of the materials left over from the summer and last fall. I've never actually taught water bottle rockets inside of the classroom and actually tied, yeah, curriculum to it, like the math and scientific method, mostly just building them and launching them and seeing what we can do differently. But there's actually an incredible amount of like the math and science that you tie in through application with these rockets. The first is, I would say, measurement and units. Now, you'll notice that each of the rockets is of a different size. Now, the driving question for these rockets, like really what, what we were really wanting to do is try to get them as high as possible. That's our goal. But the question is like, how do we do that? What do we need to do? Now, there's two things that we can control right off the bat, and that's the amount of water that we put into it and the amount of air. The kid said, well, let's just pump them up with a lot of air because it's a combination of water plus air pressure. Well, I told them, absolutely, we're going to pump them up as high as we can every time, but there's a safety valve. You can't pump them up more than 75 PSI. The only thing that we can control then, beyond like the fins and stuff, is the water. That's our first question. So all the students went through, created a hypothesis of how much water they think they should fill it, between zero and 100%. Now, I had to, actually, I should say, the students came up with the idea of filling them up a percentage base versus in milliliters is because, again, they're different volumes. So if you have, say, 100 milliliters in a small bottle, it's more full than 100 milliliters in a large bottle. They're really clever. I saw it too. I fished it out of some of them, but some of the kids said, that's not going to work right off the bat. Yeah, it was excellent. So then, we came up with, students came up with their hypothesis. They went out, filled it up with the graduated cylinders, which have a tragic flaw in them. These are actually meant for akin wind exercise, where you stick a hose through the bottom and pump them up using wind power. So there's a hole. Bad idea, just tell them, well, just hold the hole. I mean, it'll be fine. First hour tried that, water everywhere. As they measured how much water, you know, these bottles could fit, so their max volume. You can kind of see on the screen there, we have two students on the left there. They're, you know, taking turns. One person is filling up their graduated cylinder. And if you ask our students, our sixth grade students, or if you just show them a graduated cylinder, they will get so excited to tell you what it is because they're now seeing it in two classes. They're just learning it in science, and they're working with it here. Yeah, it was really cool to see that. Filling up their bottles, launching them. Now, we have another tool, this altimeter. Now, this, the kids love this thing. Because it looks like an altimeter, what else? And also really cool was that this thing busted out there, but it does, basically, you hold the trigger and you follow your rocket up until it gets to the highest point, and then you let it go. And then there's a pin that holds it in place, and then you can read either the angle you're holding your altimeter and the height in meters. So they're learning altitude tracking as well. This one actually busted, so we had to come up with a solution. One of my students actually went in, took measurements with calipers from one of our Project Lead the Way sets, and designed this in Tinkercad, something that we did earlier in the year, and tried to press fit it in because the first piece fell out. Didn't work the first time. He made a second one, just fine. So that was pretty cool. Last thing I have to say, what I was really super proud about this project was the collaboration between classes. That was, all the students had to gather three sets of datas. We had three trackers, right? The altitude measures. They had to come up with a mean, so they had to calculate the average for their team's launch, and they had to share that on a Google spreadsheet that was accessible by all the students in all of my classes, which was excellent because, you know, some of them, you know, kids were running around, like playing with them like they were morning stars, and they did break, so they couldn't launch. And they were upset about it, but, you know, a learning point for next time. After we did that, students were able to go online. I created these videos where they watched step by step how to organize and visualize the data because you're just looking at a bunch of numbers. So it was, they had to organize it, analyze it, and then they turned it into charts. So it was easier to see actually what was happening. And I have printouts here if you're interested in looking at those. I don't have them up here, unfortunately. But it was really cool to see that the students could create these charts in Google Sheets, as well as using fancy wizardry codes, equals, average, range of data, right? They're doing this in sixth, seventh, and eighth grade. And I'm still learning this now as a 32-year-old when I'm trying to calculate how much money I spent on gas over the course of the year. So, yeah, it's really impressive stuff. And I think that the students are getting a lot out of it just through the application of all these principles, these academic things that we're bringing into the classroom. So that's what I got.
Hi, my name is Melody Strong, and I'm the visual arts teacher at Franklin Middle School. And I've had the privilege of being the art teacher there since we reopened in 2015. And I've always strived to make this one of the best visual arts programs in the district. And it was really hard for me to come up with one project in particular to talk about. Just to give you an idea of some of the projects we've done in the past is, I started off doing what's called Mural Squad, which was an after-school program that I did with visual arts students and local police department at the first and fourth precincts. And what I was trying to do was connect students with law enforcement to build that gap and that relationship between those two entities so that they can learn that they are human on both sides. And they were making art together, which was a wonderful thing. The other thing I thought about was the Lincoln Playground project, which I brought, it was a STEAM project particularly. And the eighth graders were working in a real-world problem and project that actually I was involved in on the north side. I reside on the north side as well. Franklin's right here on the north side, and I really wanted them to have something relevant and real for them to apply some design concepts. We collaborated with 10x10, which is a landscape architect, and we worked with the Mississippi watershed because there's a watershed issue with the Lincoln Playground, if you're not already familiar with that. So Lincoln Playground, north side, one of our abandoned schools that we're not using right now, and the playground looks sad. So the community has rallied to try to rebuild it and re-envision it. So we brought the eighth graders in to come up with their ideas for that. And they worked as a team to build models, and they were wonderful. And then we presented them to the community. And then we had the infamous Franklin Dragon. So if you have not visited Franklin Middle School and met the dragon, you're missing out. So that was a project that we brought in on a grant that I got from Compass. A resident artist came in who's notorious in the Twin Cities for doing these sort of gigantic, life-size puppets. And so we came in and we built this puppet. The thing is, 30 feet long. It takes 15 students to operate. And there was a lot of engineering and a lot of collaboration that students did to create that dragon. It was 120 students that came together to build that in one month. And then we had three performances, and now it hangs in our media center. But the main project that I want to talk about is the recent one that I did that actually got interrupted by COVID. And that was another grant that I received from the city of Minneapolis in Recast, and that was the Oral Histories Project. And I believe Director Ellison was a part of some of that dialogue that we had. So what the kids did is they took the information and the dialogue and the information, the oral histories from the elders of North Minneapolis. There was over 86 of them, or something like the 86 elders that the city recorded. And we went through that document. It was pretty big. And we kind of split it up, and students were kind of reading it. But the other thing I wanted them to do was go through and highlight things that they connected with, something that was similar to their own stories and experiences. And we found out that there was a lot of similarities, some of the negative and some of the positive. And even though we were able to talk about things like redlining and the riots that occurred here, we also talked about reoccurring themes that kept coming up in our students' conversations, which was family. We belong together. We look out for each other. We are resilient community. So through that, we started to do some ideation. So we were using iPads in my classroom to do some research and to look up iconography and imagery and things to support some of the things that they were researching through these oral histories by our elders, but also the stuff that they were trying to confirm even through their own stories. Through that, they were able to kind of start coming up with some like idea boards for our mural project. Unfortunately, COVID hit, and we weren't able to continue that work. So I had to finish it for them. So what I was doing was setting up a camera in the gymnasium where I had the poly tab laid out, and I was painting their vision for them. And they were able to livestream and watch me do that during class time. And that was all done with iPads that I no longer have anymore. They got removed from my classroom. I have no idea where they're at. So it's a big bummer because we've used those iPads for literally everything that you see at this table, along with what we did with the dragon project as well. But what was great about the Oral Histories Project too is that it connected them to their community. It connected them with the elders in their community, as well as some of the staff in our very building that we recorded some of their histories as well, with them growing up on the north side. So I think that what we've done in the art room is really show off their greatness and what they can achieve when they have a little bit of direction and support, and then they can just blossom and create like the most amazing work that you've ever seen. Here you go.
I see Michael Lucini on his way up.
So we are, we are high school, so we thought you
So we are, we are high school, so we thought you guys would go first and then we'll come last. Hi, everybody, my name is Michael Lucini. I'm the principal for Heritage STEM Academy. We are a STEM-focused school, and one of the focus we've had this year is to create an opportunity for students to increase their academic discourse. So we set on the course this summer to really try the best we can to create opportunities for students to have exchange in classrooms that are risk-free. So I have two teachers with me, Michael Abraham and Ms. Molly is going to take us through their slides. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Molly Gill. I teach English at Heritage, and so like Mr. Lucini said, one of our biggest goals for this year is increasing our students' ability to engage in academic discourse because ask any of them and they will tell you just how much they love to talk, but it's not always about school. So being able to build that confidence and allow them to feel good about their contributions in class and engage again in that positive risk-taking behavior is really important, especially when we are learning new content. So some of the things that our students are currently doing, we, with the work that we're doing, they're responding to questions that demonstrate thoughts that require the application of analysis of information, and we're really working on incorporating higher-level critical thinking skills using Bloom's Taxonomy and focusing up on levels three through six. They are demonstrating mastery of a concept requiring them to apply knowledge and analyze content. They are generating questions about concepts that demonstrate rigorous thinking, and they explain and justify thinking when responding to questions that require synthesis and evaluation of information. Next slide. One way we have done this, and we are working on implementation at this moment, is we've created little desk cards to provide sentence frames for our students, as Mr. Abraham will discuss. We have a high percentage of students who are classified as EL students, and the majority of our students do speak Somali at home with their families. So creating these question stems and these response opportunities in a day-to-day setting where it's on every desk they go to and they can see it at every point throughout the day increases their exposure to it, increases their comfortable, their comfort level with that. So these student desk cards are, are going to be on every desk in the building, and they provide these sentence frames for students to ask questions and converse with each other to promote academic discourse. You can see we have a section for if a student is confused about a concept, and then we also have discussion questions and how to effectively and respectfully discourse with one another. And then we do focus on a list of higher-level questions for staff as well to refer to regularly to allow students to have that repeated hearing of the structure of those questions and the ability to access those, those higher-level thinking skill, skills and be comfortable with them as well. Again, that Bloom's Taxonomy levels three to six, and then this allows that, allows students to hear those same questions throughout the different disciplines, to reinforce those skills and those critical thinking levels, and help them gain confidence. And this promotes those academic discussions, especially across disciplines, to become stronger and to focus on the learning and critical thinking portions, rather than struggling to figure out how to state what they would like to state. So.
Next slide. I'm Mike Abraham, EL teacher at Heritage. So, you know, there's always a priority in highlighting creative activities that the students do, and there's always a priority put on higher-level thinking. Personally, as an EL teacher at Heritage, I make it a priority to emphasize actually the lower levels of Bloom's Taxonomy. And I'm intentional about bringing people this illustration of Bloom's Taxonomy, as it's often articulated as a triangle, where the much bigger portions are the foundation of understanding and remembering. It's an all-too-pervasive pedagogical mistake made in education of prompting students or pushing students too quickly into exhibiting the higher-level indicators before building up an appropriate foundation of knowledge acquisition. So the basis of instruction at Heritage Academy is that teachers need to focus on building a strong foundation of knowledge in students through direct instruction. That instruction has to be delivered incrementally, be logically sequenced, it must clearly distinguish between what is correct and incorrect, as well as be comprehensible to student learning levels at the outset. From there, students engage in practice of recalling that knowledge through all language modalities, and they receive feedback on their knowledge acquisition that again clearly distinguishes between what's correct and incorrect, until content knowledge is embedded in long-term memory sufficiently enough that they can competently understand their learning content and recall it with understanding. When this foundation is built, then the higher-level skills can become genuinely doable for students. And oftentimes, the students will, oftentimes, those higher-level skills will emanate naturally from the students because the solid foundation they have built up creates learner confidence and increased motivation and engagement. And what also emanates from that authentic confidence is a greater willingness to partake in productive struggle to expand learning. So something we're careful not to do at Heritage is to not undermine learner confidence by prompting students into higher-order thinking activities before a proper foundation of knowledge and recall has been established. When this mistake is made, students suffer from cognitive overload because they've not been set up properly to effectively integrate recall of knowledge, recall of process, and language formulation, as well as anything else that they have to cognitively integrate when they come into our classrooms. And this integration is necessary to authentically exhibit higher-order and thinking patterns and skills. Our students are over 90% Somali at Heritage. It was a school originally started by the Somali community. They're over 90% Muslim students. This articulation of learning is a culturally relevant articulation of learning for our students. The vast majority of our students, as is the case with the vast majority of Muslim students, in their upbringing have undergone learning in mosques. There are predictable and consistent pedagogical forms of learning done in mosques throughout the world. And if those forms of learning are not understood, then these students who undergo that learning will always be at disadvantage. Just a simple example, we always talk about asking open-ended questions, and everyone wants to ask open-ended questions, and that can lead to good things. Well, if someone's learner habits have been formed and conditioned by the learning processes in mosques, does asking open-ended questions build on that, or does it clash against it? It's fine to ask open-ended questions either way, but the implications that that teaching strategy has for that student is different depending on what the answer to that question is. And our teachers at Heritage, as well as throughout the city, they need to have knowledge of these learning processes that these students undergo. They need to acquire that so they can know whether or not what they are doing is building on the learner resources that these students have, or whether or not it's clashing against it. Thank you.
Hi, everyone, I'm Trinity. I'm the principal at Marcy, and I brought my assistant principal Jess Driscoll and my magnet coordinator Hannah Edwards with me to share some of the learning that we do at Marcy. It is our second year as an arts magnet, and the instructional strategy that we want to share with you tonight is art integration.
Arts integration is an approach to teaching in which students construct and demonstrate understanding through an art form. Students engage in creative, in a creative process which connects an art form and another subject area and meets evolving objectives in both.
So there's multiple ways that you can access art integration. One way is arts as a curriculum, and every student at Marcy receives instruction from their specialist teachers. We have visual art, dance, music, theater, PE, and band for our elementary students. We also have arts enhanced curriculum. This is performed by the classroom teacher. It's when the teachers use art to enhance or explore curricular concepts, for example, using music to teach letter names and sequences in the alphabet. The third and the most powerful is arts integrated curriculum. This is when the arts become the approach to teaching and the vehicle for learning. We have structured our schedule so that we have one specialist teacher and a grade-level team co-planning and co-teaching a 10-day unit of study. And this video is first graders learning about the life cycle of a butterfly. We're going to keep the volume off, we'll talk a little bit more as you're watching the video. But what our teachers do is they co-plan and co-teach a 10-day unit of study that uses standards and objectives from both the arts content area and the academic content area. So our magnet coordinator is going to explain some of the examples that you're seeing.
Yeah, so just as Trinity said, this is a video of some of our first graders doing a science lifecycle unit where they learned in their science curriculum time with the dance teacher, the lifecycle standards, but then also are able to remember them, I think, more authentically because they danced that lifecycle. This is a PE integration where students did some measuring of force and some physics, and then did some graphing, and really learned how the different surfaces affected the force. Parts of a story, our third graders wrote fables and then performed those fables for each other at the end of their integrated unit with the theater teacher and their third grade teachers. I think coming up next is a language arts, social-emotional classroom community kind of engagement. This is at the beginning of the year, they did music and they wrote classroom models, and they talked about building community and what a motto means, and then they repeat that motto throughout the year, so that's kind of fun. This is a tap and multiplication where students learned through tap dancing some of their multiplication facts. And then this last one is more social-emotional with our kindergartners, looking at standards around identity and positive sense of self, and then they created really unique self-portraits. So, yeah, I'm going to let Trinity kind of finish.
So our, our, every single grade level at Marcy is able to participate in three art-integrated units right now per, per school year, where they're collaborating with one of their specialist teachers. This is our second year as an arts magnet, and we're really excited to move into the phase where our classroom teachers are starting to build their capacity as artists and own some of those units of study so that we can move on to adding more and more as our teachers all develop proficiency. So eventually, we hope to have majority of our teaching and learning as project-based learning centered in the arts. So what we've learned and what we know about art-integrated experiences is they really mutually reinforce and result in deeper meaning-making, and it provides students with multiple avenues for active and experiential learning. It focuses on problem-solving and gives our students multiple ways to share and express what they learn and what they know. And we're really excited to share that with you. It's thrilling for us to be an arts magnet.
Again, thank you for your engagement. As you have noticed, we look at quality instruction much broader than simply literacy and math, and hopefully you saw that tonight. And with that, we will turn the time back over to Interim Superintendent Cox.
I just want to say thank you, everyone, and maybe we can have one person from each school stay up at the tables for a question-answer period. Thank you, thank you. Carolson, I'll turn it over to you for questions.
Thank you, thank you, everybody who came to present to us tonight. Directors, please hit your request to speak button for questions or comments. Director Arnison?
All right. Thanks so much, thanks so much for being here tonight, and I just, I really appreciate that we started by, Dr. Furin started by grounding us here with our goals. We just had the opportunity, the board just had the opportunity to participate in some training, which at least helped me with some reminders and some clearer, clearer language. And I mentioned at the last board meeting that this, like this board has, how we use our time matters, and so I kind of wanted to make some connections here tonight and ask a couple of questions. So Superintendent, you mentioned that all these committee of the holes, they're themed, which is really, these meetings are really describing the journey that all the schools are taking as they follow this map that's laid out in the strategic plan. And so I do, do really appreciate that all the people came here tonight to bring, bring this journey to life that we're, that we're on. So I'd like to use this board meeting time, though, to make a couple of connections between the journey to the map, which is our strategic plan, to our desired destination, which of course is our goals and the outcomes that we're looking for, which matters, which is where the board, of course, focuses our time and energy. So it sounds like, or talking about today, really what we're emphasizing is that implementing quality instruction is really important, it's an important landmark that we need to hit on our map if we ultimately want to reach our destination. So again, thanks to everyone here who brought that to life, and it brought some joy to our board meeting here tonight, so thanks for doing that. And so I, so I want to talk a little bit where we're at with that, with that implementation, and kind of what we're, kind of get an assessment of where we're at. And I strongly suspect that no educator anywhere, anytime is going to ever say that they've arrived at quality instruction, but yet I'm trying to kind of think about our ultimate destination and trying to assess where we're at in the journey today at this moment, especially as you mentioned, at our next meeting, we're going to be talking about some fall fast data and thinking four years ahead, like we've got, this is definitely a long journey, so I'm not at all suggesting that, I know we're just beginning, we're at the very, maybe we're at the first stop sign, I'm not really sure. I think we're on the map, I think we've begun the map because you've described the trainings that we've gone, so I know we're on the map. So keeping that map analogy, just if, maybe we could talk a little bit, I'd like to hear from a couple of different people, Superintendent, if you don't mind, where we're at, or kind of, if they could describe where they think they're at in implementing everything we heard here tonight. Understanding that everything from Dr. Furin, who started us, all the way to the Marcy School who ended us, everybody here is describing their kind of ideal, so wanting to kind of understand where people can think where they're, where they're at. And maybe that's at a district level, kind of at a high level, maybe talking about that's, you know, your confidence and what percentage schools are doing PLCs or other sorts of other, the higher-level stuff, and maybe just from the, like, and from a school level, did you expect to be further along in what's getting in the way? And maybe you're not going to, maybe you're going to speak for a friend, not for yourself. Maybe your school is just fine, and it's, but you know a friend who's maybe having trouble and could tell us about what maybe is getting in the way, especially from a board, from this higher level.
Yeah, thank you, thank you, Director Arnison. So I'm going to start, and I'll probably have Trinity talk a little bit about her journey at Marcy, and also Amy, maybe a little bit about what's happening at Winona for your specific journey. I do want to make a couple of connections, and we intentionally set up these meetings to talk about the central office support and how it moves to the schools. And I think that's really important for us to see that connection, and that we strengthen that through our relationships, through what Derek talks about, about culture and climate, but also the very technical pieces that we talk about when we talk about professional learning communities, when we talk about the curriculums we're using and the instructional strategies that match that. So I hope that people are seeing that connection as we move through and how it works at the school. And also, as we move through, we've really worked this year about having shared expectations from central office and the schools. I don't want anyone to be surprised when we start talking about what we want to see in professional learning communities, or what those look-for's are when we're thinking about reading and literacy. So that's been a really important collaborations as we've moved forward between the principals and central office too. So Trinity?
Would you, if you don't mind me interjecting, and thank you for that, that context, and I, I do see that connection between the district staff and the school staff, and I do think that's important, and would just add that I'm also trying to elevate it to say, and let's also make that connection to the board level, which is really about the goals and the outcomes, the destination. So wanting that we can close the map, but close the journey, right, and keep it at all levels.
Yes, and as, as we've talked about, as we look at our, our regular board meetings and we're talking about the metrics, that's where we'll start to see that piece really come alive too. So thanks for making that connection. Trinity?
Yeah, so as you mentioned, we're at the start of our journey, I feel like, at Marcy with the CDD changes, and we're restructuring our school community and focusing a lot of time on developing our climate and culture and welcoming our families into our school and hearing more from them, what they would like the arts experience to look like at Marcy. Marcy. There is an incredible wealth of arts. I don't know, sorry, I'm nervous. I'm just going to say it. So I know in our community, there is just a wealth of people that have knowledge and skill in the arts. And so we're really trying to tap into our families that have those connections. And we're learning which families are artists or performers and bringing that into our school and hearing from our families, like, what do they value their child to experience in connection with the art? And the way that we tie that into everything academically is through how we schedule our day and our year. We made a year-long map of what we wanted for our art-integrated projects and we linked them to all of our content standards for our grade levels. And we were really planful in making that happen. And because we did that, we've been able to be really successful with our art integrations. And then we're here today with a brand-new math curriculum, and that's our focus of our PLCs this year for all of our grade levels as they're learning and diving into what the math curriculum will look like. And, you know, from our teachers, this year, they feel like it's a lot, but they can see as they move forward how amazing this curriculum will be for the students. And they're, the kids are really loving the number talks and, or the number corners and some of the components. And as our teachers are getting the hang of it and participating in the professional development that's being provided, they're feeling more and more confident that this will be a really great curriculum that's going to give some really positive results for our students.
Trinity, I really appreciate you bringing families and parents into it because they're a valued member of our instructional community as a learning organization, for sure. Amy?
Thank you. I'm really glad I get some more time because I stuck to my three minutes the first time. So hey, I don't think I have a time limit here. And those two questions are really exciting.
Well, Amy, we'll be, we'll be talking about that later. So duly noted, we appreciate your time management.
You are welcome to test the eight o'clock end time with the chair.
Anyone that knows me, I speak really quick and I get to the point. Two thoughts really came to mind. I'm going to talk about PLCs, but I just want to share, you talked about where we are in our roadmap. We just at Winona finished two-fold data days. Kindergarten met one day, first grade met one day, dug into the data, dug into press. We have our school-wide press interventions going on. We talked about the connection of where does KCOM, Concepts of Math, and the COM fit within our new curriculum and where are we seeing it, where are we not seeing it? But real quick, we are almost all ready to November 12th and our first PLC cycle. I love PLCs. It's something I've been doing for years. And we are doing the book called Shifting the Balance. It's based on the science of reading. And we were doing the first chapter, which was oral language development. And so we did a baseline on every single one of our students as to where their oral language development is, and it was a scale of zero to 15. You might be surprised where some of the students actually fell on that. It was a baseline that we got from the University of Minnesota that is doing the press. And then we meet weekly and we are implementing. It made me think of what Heritage is doing here at K&amp;One. We're doing something called a dialogic conversation. And so, for example, if a teacher shows a picture and says, you know, what do you see going on in this picture? And the student replies back and says, I see a kid in a swing. Oftentimes, the teacher will just say, yes, or that's right, or they don't expand on it. I'm sorry. Sitting you over there. And so the idea is that once a student replies back, the teacher expands on it more to increase vocabulary. So the picture is actually a hammock. And so the teacher replies back and says, they are swinging. Yes, they are swinging. We call that a hammock. What else do you see? So it's a way of increasing that vocabulary, affirming what they said was correct. Or if they need to make a self-correction, they do it very gently and not like, no, that's not what's going on. And so that is what our first PLC is. We are starting our baseline roughly November 8th, or our progress monitoring, to see if there was an improvement. Because if, if they cannot, that is the step before that phonological awareness piece. And so that's why we are starting with that. And we hope to get through three chapters. Seems like you could do more, but it takes a long time to go through a PLC with, with all of the other things. So, thank you.
Yeah, I appreciate you making that connection between what happens in our kindergarten classes all the way up through our high schools. So thank you.
Thank you. Director Jordaine?
Thank you, Carolson. I just wanted to go back to one slide, and it's the culture, climate, I think it's page 30. Really quickly, so when we're talking about students who feel safe and welcomed in their schools, and I know I've talked about this before, you know, when you've been talking about state familiarity and stability in our schools with our staff. So like our, our students, whether they have families, you know, they're a third grader and they have a fifth-grade brother or sister, and that we see those stability in our schools with what, with what we're teaching them, with all the excellent things that you guys brought tonight. But also to see that if they have younger siblings, that the younger siblings are like, oh, my gosh, hopefully I get to do this with this teacher in fifth grade. You know, I, what are we doing to really strengthen that, you know, stability in our schools? I know we have staffing adjustments and all that. I don't want to talk about that part. But what are we doing among our, our current schools in terms of retaining our stu, our teachers? Because there are some really great teachers here tonight. And I think since we started this format, I think every single teacher and staff admin, et cetera, et cetera, has done nothing but fantastic. I mean, this is, you know, I can't make it out to every single school to see what every single school is doing, but, I mean, it is just amazing. And that's what I think an example is of when we give the stuff back to the sites and say, let's, let's see what's working. So I would just want to see, what are we planning on? I don't know what it says percent or whatever it is on there, but like, teachers care about. I mean, it shows teachers are invested. If we support them, we, we support them in what they're doing, whether it's with the arts magnet, whether it's at Heritage, you know, and teachers want to feel welcome. And that translates onto our students. And that's where that stability, familiarity of our, of our staff. So when you have open houses, parents will know, oh, hey, Mr. Jordaine's going to try and teach math this year, or whatever it is. He's going to teach this, or so-and-so's going to teach that. So what are we doing for that, for that strategic plan? I know it's not listed, but where would that fall under? And then, because some of these projects are, are fantastic. And I'll just end with that. And can somebody please get Ms. Strong some iPads? I mean, seriously, because, I mean, we need those, those students need, you know, they need those to, to continue the good work that's going on there, as well as, I'm going to mispronounce her last name, but what the science teacher is doing. I mean, those are projects that need to be invested in the North Side. And, I mean, you know, I, I think that's, that also comes into our equity values that we have presented as a board. But going back to my original question is like, how are we strengthening that stability and familiarity in our schools, not just where I live, but also North Minneapolis, Northeast, with, with making sure our students have those supports and they, they feel welcome because they see people who are invested in their sites, is basically what I'm saying.
Yeah, thank you for the question. You know, I'm going to throw it probably to Heather and Michael, just to give examples at the school level. I will say that, you know, that it is a, it is a fine line for when you switch, when you're in a staffing shortage, from this idea of recruitment to retention, right? So it feels like it all kind of has to glom together. And I think from a central office point of view, as we look at what retention and what we can do to support our schools in that, it really is, as we look at our norms about building relationships, having clear communication to our staff, and also recognition, right? And that recognition can come through teachers' contracts. It can come through recognition programs that we do. So those are all pieces that we try to put in place that can work centrally across all of our schools. And then I think every school kind of has their own piece about retention also. So Heather, can I turn it over to you for some thoughts about what you do at Franklin?
Absolutely. Actually, this was one of my first questions that I asked myself as I took over as interim. We did not have a high turnover at all. And I was like, oh, no, new principal. That oftentimes means some people are like, nope, not going to do it. Luckily, I had been there as the assistant principal. And so I, I've done a lot of reflecting about this, and I think about myself as a teacher and as a leader, and I think about the things that I would do as a classroom teacher. It's important to create that autonomy and act as a facilitator and a guide and a support rather than to tell and, and give and say, here's what you have to do. As you can see, I did not go into Mr. Shadegh's room and say, here's the lesson plan you need to do. He takes it upon himself and he has, you know, attended professional development. Ms. Strong, obviously, takes it upon herself and then comes for support and guidance. And that is what is provided, rather than saying, here's what you have to do, here's the PLC you have to do, here's what is required. I think that that has been a crucial element, at least I can speak for Franklin, to just say, like, what, whatever you want to do, I want to make sure you have everything in place so I can support it. In one of my, one of the interviews of one of our science teachers, she turned it back around and said, what are you going to do for me? And I said, I'm just going to make sure you have everything that you need to get the job done, to get the kids engaged. And so just creating that level of support and that autonomy, I think, has been crucial and to act as a guide and not tell you what to do. I think that that has been crucial for the attainment of staff at, at Franklin because it really was one of those things that I stepped back. And I don't know, because I'm actually not one of the teachers that, I was one of the staff that decided to stay, but I'm not one of the teachers. So I need to turn that over to them and ask them. And that's been one of my missions for the school year. Why did you decide to stay and how can I continue that, that going?
Yeah, I really appreciate that question, that you're asking your staff. And I think we need to do it as an organization about what, what, a succession plan. So I think about you as an assistant principal and moving into a principal position. I think about wanting to make sure that our staff that are inspired to be in a different position, have those opportunities through our pathways and through support of, of our organization, and those that have found their dream job, that we keep them healthy and we keep them inspired in that position, too, as they move forward. So thanks for bringing that up. Michael?
Yeah, and what I would say, just to follow Heather here, will be, you know, staff validation is important. It's critical to the work we do. And I've been lucky not to have a lot of turnover in, since I've been at Heritage. We've been pretty, pretty good at retaining staff and staff wanting to stay. And one of the things they would say to me, the reasons that they want to stay, year in and year out, is because you see me. And that's critical to the work. Now, in my case, I've been at Heritage for, this is my sixth year, and we've tried to do the best we can to create the atmosphere where staff feel like, if I'm not there, that means I'm missing something, right? Staff see me, the principals see me, we are celebrating together, I have the tools to do my job. But I, I think the most critical piece for me, that the staff would tell me, the reason why they stay was they felt validated. Whatever concern they had, they believed I heard them. I could make a different decision, it didn't matter. What mattered was Michael came to me and heard me, and that was the difference. Right? I had staff leave and come back to me and say, well, I moved, and when I came back, I decided to, to come back to Heritage. Or I made a decision to leave and I thought about it and I decided I wanted to come back to Heritage. So to me, the critical piece for me as a leader is how do I validate my staff? Given contextually that I may not have any control over answers, I may not have control over the next steps, but they believe that, they know that I saw them. They believe that I validated them. Give them enough pause to say, I want to be here. So to me, that's the piece that, that really have resonated with me over my time at Heritage.
Thank you. Director Soria?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I want to thank you all, but I want to specifically thank our young student, is it Ibrahim, if I recall? Ibrahim, thank you so much for, for being so brave, for being here and educating us about your culture, your language. It's incredible what you are doing. And it takes a village to raise a child, so I do have the fortune of knowing these two incredible women. We actually work together at Ella Baker with the family. So I really want to thank you for providing all the support and love to our students because at the end of the day, it's all about our kids. It's not about the adults. What is it that we are doing to provide them and to, to advocate for them and to fight for them, right? Thank you so much. Gracias. And another thing, I want to thank, thank you, Michael, for being so vulnerable, for being so honest and opening your heart, because leadership does matter. And we need real leaders in our school buildings that actually, when you need the help and support from your team, from the district, and from the board, that you reach out. Thank you, Ms. War, for inviting us to come to your school. Your, your school is not part of my district, so that was really beautiful. I heard that, so I really appreciate it. And what is it that we can do as a board? I want to thank Ms. Melody Strong for being brave as well, for speaking up, because I feel that we have to be very honest with each other and just, you know, make things better. And what is it that we can do to support and love one another and to hold each other accountable as well and to push each other to do better? Because we, our students, unfortunately, the data, you know, is not lying. They are so behind. And I feel that also in these presentations, I would like to hear more of the challenges that you face as leaders and as educators as well. So thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Director Ins?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I don't have any questions either. I just wanted to say thank you and that I am really honored, I think, to have served on this board for a number of years now and to see the work that is taking place in our district that I know is just, you know, to see here tonight, the work that takes place and the level of professionalism and creativity and commitment to our children in our district in ways that are, you know, just really beyond what I think most people would believe or expect takes place in our schools is, I, I know it's taking place. I, and when I started on the board, I would, the last couple of years, we haven't been able to get to schools as much. But I would go to schools or even just with my own children, what I've seen in schools just has always blown me away. And as a teacher myself for 15 years, I'm, I'm just always amazed with the level of work that takes place in our schools. And so I'm really grateful to have the opportunity to see it and see it reflect the goals that we have set forth through our strategic plan as well and have it be directly connected to that here in the boardroom. It's really an honor. So I just want to say thank you and I'm really grateful for the opportunity to have served. And I was moved to tears by the presentation from our children here today. So thank you very much for that as well. So thank you.
Thank you. Director Caprini?
Thank you, Madam Chair. So lots of thank-yous and congratulations and full of excitement. This is probably one of my most favorite board meetings. And I know, a lot of people know, I'm that, that geek who likes to watch board meetings and I love my meetings and it's just awesome. But I have never been so proud to be a part of a group of folks that saw the value in world language pathways, that understood that changes needed to be made in order for our children to have the experiences and opportunities that they had not had for decades. Our academic scores may not be the best, but I know we can get better. And through the work that all of you have been doing tirelessly for the last, well, some of you have been in school, some of you are at the Davis Center, so for, for my tenure, has been amazing. I've been begging for something like this for years, even before I got on the board. Why aren't we hearing from the children? Why don't we have high school students here talking about their experiences? Why don't we have principals and all of these things that have been occurring over the last year, six months, whatever the case may be? But what But what I'd like to say is thank you to the board directors that had the courage to vote for the comprehensive district design. Every single thing that has occurred in our magnets is possible, because you have the value and the goal to make sure that changes were going to occur. And people don't like change, but guess what? Our kids are adapting to the change that we were able to make for them and for this district, because we are a district of schools, not schools within a district. So I applaud all of you for your work. I appreciate you, and I cannot wait to continue to watch progress, because I believe in you. I believe you want to do this work. We don't just tell the children that we believe in them, we have to tell you that we believe in you. These people here at the Davis Center and the staff in our buildings, I do believe in you, and I appreciate the work you're doing. So with that, I just want to say thank you to the young man that is still here in the gallery, Ibrahimah. Thank you. I'm going to, that's okay. I'm going to learn to count to 100 in Somali. That's a promise. All right. Thank you.
Thank you. Director? Yes, yes, yes! Director Ali.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. I want to thank all the presenters tonight's presentation. It's really great. I echo what my colleague says, Director Sariah and Director Ins. I'm equally moved by the presentations of our young students from Lindell, and that's really very, I'm very delighted to see that. I am blessed to see that the Somali language program is working effectively. And I want to say that also, I want to say that we need to invest more in this program. It's important. It also creates the, the community sees themselves. I see that Principal Luzini said that his staff, they saw him every day. In this case, it's bigger than the kids that are learning the language. Somali community sees themselves in MBS. If we continue to invest that, this program, and as you have seen it now, the demonstrations of our young, whom I can maybe, I can call him young teacher, Omar, he already tried to help Director Caprini to learn Somali language. That's the quality of these students. People do talk a lot of sometimes negative things about MBS, this and that, but truly speaking, this is, you know, a lot of great things happen in Minneapolis, and we have to be, we have to be proud of ourselves. We have to present it. And I thank each and every one of you. And I thank each and every one of you, you know? This is what you really, you know, every one of you contributed this, and you have to be proud of that. We need to continue investing that. And the other thing I would like to also mention that is that I, you know, we come from different cultures, different backgrounds, different religions. Nobody is here to convert another one, you know? Everyone has his or her own culture. So we Somali Americans, for example, we come from a culture, we're Muslim culture. So there is a way of teaching children. Like, for example, in myself, when I was three years old, I was able to write another foreign language, which is Arabic. Our native language, Somali. But the reason why we learn Arabic is because of the religion, the book we believe in, Quran, is written in Arabic. So we learn it. So there is a way, there's techniques, there's matters, that as the teacher explained it, how you learn it. So we can incorporate some of those styles of teaching and learn from. So my humble opinion is that teachers can learn from one another, you see? And that way, you know, there's a different way of, students, they understand different way, you know? As even adults, you know, some of us, we learn through long ways, you know? Like, for example, I myself love to learn in front of the teacher. I like better when the teacher is standing in front of me. Some people, it's easier for them to learn through online. Online is not my thing, you see? You see? Same thing like that. So I hope that we continue to invest in our unique schools that run in unique programs such as Heritage. And I want to, all of us, to see one another, you see? Like the way Principal Luzini said, I saw my, you know, I, we as support members, you see? We want to see you, okay? We want to see each other, in other words. And that way, we can move forward, and I'm hopeful with the leadership we have now, things will move forward. Thank you very much. May God bless you. May God bless the United States of America. Thank you. I'm not running for any office, though, okay? And I mean it, I mean it, you know? December is the end of my term, but I, you will always, I will always pray for you, and thank you.
Thank you, Director Ali. Director Alamein.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and to the committee here. Again, just as my colleagues have said, just thank you for the work that is being done. I have to agree with Director Ernstson as far as the map. Tonight's presentation and the presentation that we have gives me hope, as I see and know how we're trying to outline our strategic plan. But again, I want to emphasize that when I do see our data, let's not forget about our Black and Brown children. And when I see all the artwork and everything that's been displayed, but I think about Henry and how different cuts have been made to remove those different things, right? So as a board, I'm asking us to just keep that in the forefront of us, that our children are amazing, our children are brilliant, and they all learn in different ways. And it is our responsibility, our responsibility to be fiscal responsible, to make sure that our children have the resources that they need in their schools. So it shouldn't be that schools on one side of town has this opportunity and schools on the other side do not. All of our children deserve to succeed and to have the opportunity and to show how amazing they are and to show how they learn in all different ways. And so for me, again, this gives me hope. It gives me hope to know that we have a lot of work to do, but we have started to recognize the work that needs to be done. And I would also like to see more of our students actually here to talk about their experience, our high school students, some of our older students, some of our, you know, teachers that are actually in the classroom, even our ESPs. Those folks play a critical, critical role in the work that our teachers and our principals are able to do. So as we are trying to outline and draft our strategic plan and give ourselves this layout, let's make sure that we include everyone and bring them to the table as well. So again, thank you. I look forward to continuing to work, to continue the hard work, to roll up our sleeves and to really just lean in and listen to the needs from our educators, our students and our family. Thank you.
Thank you. Student representative, Lesu.
Thank you. I know we're running out of time here, so I'll keep this short, but I have three things to say. First of all, thank you to our young students who joined us today. I always get excited whenever I see students coming to this room, because not a lot of students like use their voice, and it's really great to see, so thank you. I think you should honestly be up here in my spot, so I hope to see you up here one day. Thank you. And then also, just thank you to everyone here tonight. I've had the pleasure and honor of just being here and seeing all the work that goes behind just teaching our students. And I've never really gotten to see that perspective, and I'm really lucky to. So I really encourage you to keep going, making sure that all MBS students really have access to all of these great programs, even Franklin here tonight. I can make connections to what you guys are doing. I had to do like Google spreadsheets and equations and everything in my high school engineering classes, which is really great to see that, you know, we're getting to younger kids and making those connections at a younger level, so they know that, you know, these pathways are available for them in high school and later on in life, and that's really cool to see. And if I was going into elementary school or starting the process over again, I would be super excited to do so. And this is just really great to see, so thank you all.
Thank you, everybody. Seeing no one else in the queue, I want to thank my fellow directors. Thank you, thank you, thank you, staff. And especially, I want to thank the students who showed up here tonight. Please remember that our next meeting is a special meeting regarding the superintendent search process. It's next Tuesday, November 1st at 5:00 PM. We'll be looking at proposals for potential community engagement contract providers. Our next regularly scheduled business meeting will be a week later than usual on November 15th because of Election Day. It's on November 8th, so don't show up here on Election Day. Go vote. Without objection, I will now adjourn this meeting. Good night, everyone.